This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, on this All-Star evening. I thought about wearing a stash, but cooler heads prevailed, so I will go ahead and proceed. John, you're looking at me like...
I wore one.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Whittington?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Here.
Mr. Mumper?
Here.
All members are present. We have no requests to amend the agenda. Before we vote on the minutes, there's just one typo under "Old Business O." One, two, three. On the fourth paragraph down, it says, "Mr. Sankar stated that he agreed with Mr. Sankar." I'm sure Mr. Sankar did agree with Mr. Sankar, but I'm pretty sure it was Mr. Mumper.
Oh, I thought it was Mr. Thornbury.
Oh, was it? I don't remember. And I'm pretty sure it was Mr. Mumper. So noting that change, the fourth paragraph will read, "Mr. Mumper stated that he agreed with Mr. Sankar." So with that, we have consideration of the minutes. What's your pleasure? Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes as they're read.
Seconded by Mr. Whittington. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no requests to address council on agenda items. We will move on to public hearing. We will close or suspend the regular meeting. And we will now open the public hearing for the purpose of reviewing or hearing testimony on the final plans for commercial parcel 11A Building 5 Hotel at Rookwood Exchange. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the public hearing for the final plans for commercial parcel 11A Building 5 Hotel, Rookwood Exchange? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. We will now, we have no third and second reading of ordinances. We will now proceed to introductory reading of ordinances, the first of which is an ordinance approving the final plan for commercial parcel 11A at Rookwood Exchange covered by the planned unit development overlay zone over the vicinity of Edwards Road and Edmondson Road. What's your pleasure? Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance approving the final plan for commercial parcel 11A at Rookwood Exchange, Building 5 of the project known as Rookwood Exchange, covered by the planned unit development overlay zone over the vicinity of Edwards Road and Edmondson Road. Ordinance approving the final plan for commercial parcel 2A at Rookwood Exchange, Building 5 of the project known as Rookwood Exchange, covered by the planned unit development overlay zone over the vicinity of Edwards Road and Edmondson Road. Ordinance approving the final plan for commercial parcel 2A at Rookwood Exchange, Building 5 of the project known as Rookwood Exchange, covered by the planned unit development overlay zone over the vicinity of Edwards Road and Edmondson Road.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to resolutions. First is a restated resolution of the Council of the City of Norwood, Hamilton County, Ohio. Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the... ...the rules should be passed with three readings.
Suspend the rules, you have all three readings.
Suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Is there a second? Mr. Clark? Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, I believe, just as a note of explanation, this resolution comes to pass here due to the fact that the change in the police and fire pension rate goes into effect on 7/12, so we have to be, have this approved in order to be able to pursue and make these payments with this next payroll. It was at 11.5 percent is what the percentage was at the time, and the letter from police and fire pension dated on May 29, 2015 say that on 7/12/15 it goes into effect, so at 12.25 percent. So we need to have this in place in order to make the proper deductions and payments to the police and fire pension with the state of Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Restated resolution of the Council of the City of Norwood, Hamilton County, Ohio. Restated resolution of the Council of the City of Norwood, Hamilton County, Ohio. Restated resolution of the Council of the City of Norwood, Hamilton County, Ohio.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move the rules. Resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
I'm going to abstain from this because I have a son that's a firefighter.
My vote of six to nothing and one abstention, the motion passes. We'll move on to the second resolution, and that's a resolution honoring the area board of Realtors for their commitment to Norwood's health and safety through Realtors with Heart. Mr. Clark?
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Would you like to have the first in its entirety?
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Then we'll put words in your mouth, but...
I appreciate that.
But I just did.
Thank you.
Mr. Braden, seconded. The motion on the floor is to have all three readings, the first in its entirety, and the second and third by caption. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution honoring Cincinnati area board of Realtors for their commitment to Norwood's health and safety through Realtors with Heart. Whereas Cincinnati area board of Realtors began a committee known as Realtors with Heart, and whereas Realtors with Heart seeks to improve the health and safety of the people of Norwood, and whereas Realtors with Heart aims to make the people of Norwood more aware of the importance of CPR, cardio pulmonary recitation, and AED, automated external defibrillator training in saving the lives of sudden cardiac arrest victims by giving immediate CPR and AED help, and whereas Realtors with Heart aims to train as many people in the city of Norwood as possible in CPR, and whereas Realtors with Heart aims to train as many people in the city of Norwood as possible in AED use, and whereas Realtors with Heart aims to increase the number of registered AEDs in the city of Norwood so as to have AEDs start to become as common as fire extinguishers, and whereas Realtors with Heart has already funded AED link mapping software for the city of Norwood's 911 communication center and aims to encourage AED link mapping software for other 911 systems, and whereas one person can be instrumental in saving the life of a person suffering from sudden cardiac arrest by immediately calling 911, starting CPR, and using an AED, all within three to five minutes of a collapse, and whereas council, the administration, and all residents of the city of Norwood wish to commend and thank Realtors with Heart for their dedication to the health and safety of Norwood, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that this resolution recognizes the efforts of the Cincinnati area board of Realtors and Realtors with Heart to provide CPR training and AED placement and registration and advocacy within the city of Norwood, and the city of Norwood would like to issue a call to action now to encourage all citizens, businesses, and departments of the city of Norwood to learn CPR, make AEDs more abundantly available, and to promote these lifesaving efforts. Resolution honoring Cincinnati area board of Realtors for their commitment to Norwood's health and safety through Realtors with Heart. Resolution honoring Cincinnati area board of Realtors for their commitment to Norwood's health and safety through Realtors with Heart.
Mr. Clark? I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I believe at the last meeting we had some discussions when, I forget the lady's name who was here and gave us a nice presentation and the importance of these units being installed. And I know we were going to check. I know I didn't check, I apologize, but I didn't know. Did you have a chance to check to see if any of ours had been updated as yet?
I have not checked, but it's on my thing to do with Mr. Gears, and I told Mr. Clark that I would certainly be willing to get the batteries for them because my guess is they're dead. Yes. Mr. Clark?
And actually, after we spoke after the meeting, I called Mark Johnson, I told you I had his contact, and he actually checked within the last six months, and everything is sort of out of date.
Sure. Sort of.
By five-plus years.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've been retired in '08, so...
Yeah, about six months ago, he checked City Hall, and I heard he said, like, the school, like, the high school and the middle school, and those were all out of date.
Out of date as well.
Yeah.
Okay. But we will follow up. Do that. Yes, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, and he's working on securing a grant as well that he can use for multiple communities or something, so to...
To purchase.
For this purpose, for batteries and things.
Excellent.
So I'll let you guys know.
Great, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to administration reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. To begin with, you know, there's been discussions about the cornerstone of City Hall in just a hundred years. Any idea was to get into that cornerstone to see if there was anything in there, because there was reports, there was newspaper articles. So with the thought of Geraldo Rivera in my mind, you know, and fear of that, we decided that we would discreetly get into the cornerstone and take a look, and if there's anything in there, we would go from there. We did that today. This is what we found inside. It's a metal container, it's manufactured, it's made out of copper, and it's sealed, it's fashioned in a way that it's sealed with solder. So we put on our social media today that finding it in the cornerstone is not a big deal. It's what's in here that counts. We know there's something in there, we don't know what. We're exploring the option of seeing if we can get it x-rayed. But what we put on Facebook today was that if anybody had any ideas, any suggestions, when we should open it, how that should be accomplished, we would be open to it. The idea is, if people are interested in this, not just open it so few people can see or be present, open it in such a fashion that as many people as want can do it. Once it's open and the contents are revealed, if they're not disintegrated, the idea would be to come up with some sort of a display case that we could put in the first floor of City Hall where everybody could see it anytime they wanted rather than stick it in somebody's office. So we've got it up, and I said that we could send it to Rodney Rogers, who's a historical society. Donna Lake is Vice Mayor and President of the Council for suggestions, and then what we'll try to do is come to a conclusion on where and when and how we go about opening this. I think caution should be used. Of course, we don't want some idiot with a blowtorch next to it, but if there's a drama tool or somebody with the knowledge that we could cut along the solder and not damage the contents and open it that way would be good. So we're working on that. As soon as we get the suggestions, we'll make the announcement. We've had people say, "We would sure like to figure out how to get it out." You know, "If you could notify the news media somewhere." I'll kind of leave that up to somebody to notify news media. Sometimes we don't get long, so we will try to do that in such a fashion that people can see it. The next issue would be is, if there's something in there that we can display, we would use this container. The next decision would be is another container in, there are people that said, "We want to put another container," and put something back in the cornerstone and seal it back up. That leads to another discussion. If you've got 30 people, there'll be 30 different ideas of what they want to go into that. So it's a way of kind of keeping our history alive and yet using everything at our disposal to make sure that anybody that wants to be involved in this, anybody that wants to have a say-so in it, anybody wants to see it open, will have that opportunity. And before any decision's made, Donna will know, council members will know, and we'll put it out there so everybody knows and everybody can be involved in it. So that's that issue. And I'm kind of anxious to see what's in there. I understand there's something from the schools, from the Norwood Eagles or the Moose, one of them, I don't know. Both of them hit bars at the time, so I'm sure they were both involved in it. And I think there was an organization, it was prior to the Norwood Professional Businesswomen and Presbyterian Church, so when Rodney gets out the article, we should, you know, those people should have, you know, play a role in this. So I think it's exciting, and we'll get it going as soon as fast as we can get to suggestions in. That's point one. The second point, or the third thing, is sometime, I got a letter today, and I've never been addressed this way, and it starts out, "Dear big tree enthusiast."
I understand why. You've never been addressed that way.
I like trees, and I've made that clear. I argued with the tree board when they wanted to cut down that big tree out in front because it didn't belong there. I defended that tree. And so when they said, "Big tree enthusiast," I don't know that, but I'm glad to have that role. This is from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. It's seen, and I spoke to Donna about this before. John may have a little knowledge on this going back some years. He remembers this old stuff. There was a, it's called Ohio Champion Tree Certificate. It's funny how they're addressing it, but I think this is kind of neat. The city of Norwood, Linder Park, the tree described below has been listed on the Ohio Champion of Tree Register. It's a Schumard oak. It's 263 inches in circumference, 111 feet high, 100 feet crown spread, with a total points of 399. Now, this was, I guess, inspected on May 27, 2015. The Latin name of the tree, I won't even attempt, but it is kind of neat that something that, you know, that's in our city, that's, you know, in our park system, has been honored. So, and I'm ashamed to say, maybe I paid more attention. If somebody was to ask me which tree it is, I don't think there's anybody in this room could tell you. If somebody were to ask me, I'd say, "Look for the big tall one, there it is." That's just, the big one is the one. But I think it's kind of neat, so we'll make it a point. Donna said maybe we can get a plaque or something.
Tree board, I think, could probably do that. Put a plaque on it.
Recognition for it. It's just a shame that people that have been around here as long as we have, Donna and the tree board and everybody else, that we didn't know it. John, maybe you can help us out, guide us through this.
I remember this, a few years after we acquired Linder Park, a forester came down from the state of Ohio and told us we had a champion tree.
That's that.
And I thought there was a plaque on that champion tree.
That was the old, that big maple tree that was near the Spring House.
Spring House.
And that's unfortunately died and was cut down.
It's not a champion anymore.
No, it's not a champion. Maybe a champion in someone's fireplace, but, you know, so that one is gone. I'm not sure where this one was or how it was, if somebody nominated it or if they just came down. I don't know.
But I do, I do think, joking aside, this is kind of neat. And, you know, when you, as many times as we've all been up in that park to walk by it and not know it, you know, it's kind of a shame. So we will be exploring that and looking at the possibility of putting a plaque by it. That's item number two. The final item is, I posted this some time ago, I believe in June, sometime in June, I'd say, last part of June, there was an article in the Inquirer about the 911 system. And the county dispatchers, or the county commissioners, were talking about placing some sort of a tax to support the county system. And of course, that led to, you know, the same discussion that you hear time and time and time again. I had a brief discussion with Chris Brown, you know, "Can somebody just level a tax? And if they can find, but can somebody level a tax on our city and send it somewhere else?" Now, we have a real serious problem with that. So that can be explored. The other option is, the other discussion is, is that any time this comes up, it always comes down to, "Well, we got to get rid of our 911 system." And every time it comes down to that conversation, the members never lie. We will lose money if we get rid of that 911 system. Not only will our risk go up to our residents, but we won't save any money. There's a couple of reasons for that. This is the same thing that they went through, in the article it stated, that Colrain Township and some other agencies, who went with the county, the county got forced through, just, they were forced to do it. They raised the cost that they were charging to these other municipalities because they needed that, those funds to keep their system operating. There's just the way it is. So had we made that decision to do away with our 911 system back four or five years ago, we would have done away with it, and our costs would have skyrocketed because they can't, the price keeps going up. What a lot of people forget is, we do receive funds from people who call 911 from a cell phone. There's a tax, and there's a tax on that cell phone that goes, comes to us. It's separated, the county separates that, and if our 911 system, it comes to us, helps support that gap. The other issue is, is that if you get rid of the 911 system, you still have to have people down there operate those funds. You still need people down there anyway, so really, your personnel cost is high, so you would gain nothing. That being said, the same people that were, that have the 911 system in Colrain Township, and I forget the other ones, are telling their residents, "Don't call 911. Call this other one." So your call volume goes up on those people that are in that dispatch center, and they have to run wants, QRs for license plates, wanted people, all that kind of stuff. So we had discussed at that time, and we were vehemently opposed to doing away with that 911 system. That does not mean that down in the future, if Cincinnati and Hamilton County decide to ever get together and play nice, that they could merge and there would be one system, and it would be cost-effective for us to do that, and our safety wouldn't go down, we would do it. We would seriously look at it and make the recommendation that the council do it. The other issue is, is that in our system, when you call 911, they know your address. It comes up. A lot of these systems don't do that. So this is in no way a criticism of the county commissioners. They have a problem. They're trying to keep their system up and operating, and they're doing everything they can to keep their residents and their businesses safe. And I totally understand that. I just don't want to, I don't think the city of Norwood should help pay that bill. We will assist, we will work with, we will consider anything. But at this present time, I don't know the legality of the tax they're proposing. I don't know whether, if the county would make an arbitrary decision to start charging that tax, whether they would have to funnel that money back to us. I don't know. It's in the infancy stage. And a lot of times, articles like this or statements like this are made by people who the old saying, "I'm going to run it up that flagpole and see who sluits it." And so I believe what happened was, they were, they're getting into a position where they need funding for that system because of the new radios that, once again, I think, Motorola make a million dollars, like Apple changing the radios every few years, so we all have to buy new stuff. But we're looking at that, too. So they're looking at a funding situation, and so are we. So at this present time, the administration's position is, we sit back, we keep our system, and we are open to discussions if we believe we can save money and not jeopardize the safety of our residents. And we explore all the options. So that's where that stands, and I know, once I posted, I was concerned that people would, well, I'm not really that concerned, but I had the thought process that people would be upset or thinking that, you know, that we're wanting to not be cooperative. That couldn't be further from the truth. It's just that every time we turn around, the same subject comes up, and every time we turn around, the numbers don't change. And when those numbers change, we'll be the first to come and tell you. The only thing that could change is the fire department. I spoke to the chief today. They're doing, they're doing a research on that 911, police and fire, but they're also looking at updating the 911 system. And to show you how that works, some time ago, I don't know, back when I, right after I came back or right before I went out, there was talk, "Well, it's going to cost $600,000, and, you know, we got to change this radio system," and it was, "The world's coming to an end." And now we're hearing that, "Well, maybe it's not that much. Maybe it's less, and maybe we can do this for, you know, at least about 20 years." So these things have a way of working out. Will we have to change some radio equipment? Yes, because it all changes over the years. Technology changes. Will it be like everybody thought at the beginning? No. So we will keep you posted on all aspects of it. Sorry for the length of the report, but I just wanted to make the record clear. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy.
Mr. Mumper?
Just a comment. Try to guard that copper box, you know, that could wind up somewhere and be cashed in. We probably should have cashed it in about five years ago when we had some financial problems. We could have used, you know, 50 bucks.
Yes, some stripper will try to get it. He won't make it, but he might try.
But you better keep it locked up and back in the cornerstone as quick as possible.
Well, we'll get him if he tries.
Any other questions of the mayor? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We have no other requests to address council. Is there any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, and there unfinished business, I believe, a few meetings ago, we talked about setting dates for the citywide yard sales, which we did for the one in the summer, but we never really did set or have a resolution ordinance prepared for the one here in September. I would like to make a recommendation that we have it on, set it for September the 4th and 5th. Even though that is Labor Day weekend, I still think that would still be beneficial Even though that is Labor Day weekend, um, I still think that would still be beneficial for the, to get the word out and have it that weekend versus pushing it out further into September. So I would like to, uh, if, if council would agree, um, to set and request an ordinance or resolution, whichever one we would, would be required for the citywide fall yard sale to be set for September, Friday the 4th and Saturday the 5th. I'd like to make a motion on that if I could.
Okay.
I'll second the motion and agree.
So the motion on the floor then is to prepare, have a resolution prepared declaring September 4th and 5th as the dates of the citywide yard sale. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion on that? Mr. Sankar?
It just, I, I did have a, a few folks had called because they wanted to kind of schedule things around it and especially the facilities they wanted to use and also the time that they needed to, to get prepared. So, um, I told them that we would make a point to, uh, put it on tonight to see if we could at least set it so we could advertise the date and, uh, and then have at our next meeting, have the actual paperwork prepared to formally, uh, have it go through.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to prepare a resolution declaring September 4th and 5th to be the dates of the citywide yard sale. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Is there any other unfinished business? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, just, I know we brought it up before, but, um, this coming Tuesday and Wednesday are Norwood days here within the city of Norwood and Old Coney. And the parade kicks off at seven o'clock down by the Kroger gas station, uh, on Ashland and Montgomery Road and finishes up right past the firehouse on Montgomery Road. So, um, people want to get out and line the streets or there is still time. If you wanted to get a float in, you probably would be towards the back, but, um, if you wanted to get a group in, there's still time. If you contacted the Norwood Chamber, um, there still could be a possibility. But anyway, that starts at seven o'clock on Tuesday. And then on Wednesday at, uh, Old Coney, the Norwood Professional Business Women's Association puts on a, a fine, um, deal out there where it includes your, uh, all the rides, swimming camaraderie and have their raffle and that. So it's a day at Old Coney. And that begins, I believe, at 10:00 on, uh, on Wednesday, the 22nd. So hopefully we can see everybody there. Thank you.
Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. (laugh) I'm so, I'm shocked to see you. Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I wanted to remind everyone that on July 25th at the Corner Williams in Elsmere, there will be the farmer's market. Uh, we hosted a farmer's market here in June, which was very well attended. There was about 100, uh, people that came to shop for produce, bread, pies. Um, it was so successful that most of our vendors sold out of all the items that they were selling, so I would encourage people to get there early. Uh, it begins at 10:00 and goes to 1:00 and that's at the Corner Williams in Elsmere. Uh, there'll be produce vendors, breads, bread vendors, pies, uh, street pops, lemonade, and it'd just be a good time to get out and buy fresh produce in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And the other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I, um, unless somebody else can back me up on this, but I believe, um, and I apologize because I didn't speak with the chief of police today, but I believe he is, um, having a stamp out heroin forum down at, uh, Fenwick Park on the Saturday, the 18th, and I believe it's from noon till 3:00. And, um, I, I-
This coming Saturday?
That's correct. And, um, so I, I didn't get to speak with him today about it, but I did have a communique that that was set and was going to be going on. So it's at Fenwick Park, um, from noon till 3:00 on the 18th, um, the stamp out heroin, uh, forum or rally, so.
All right, thank you. Any other new business? We'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from the mayor regarding executive session.
Ms. Donna M. Lake, President and members of Norwood City Council, RE, Executive Session. Dear Madam President and members of council, I am requesting the council to go into executive session Tuesday, July 14, 2015, to discuss a contractual matter. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, Madam President. We received and filed a letter and then we go into executive session.
For the purpose?
For the purpose of, as stated by-
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. So ask that the TV cameras and sound be turned off and all those who are not, members of council are not part of the, um, organization for which we're discussing the contract would leave chambers. We will come back in, reconvene to address the last letter.
I, well, they, they, they tried to, you know, judge me and now it's... That's, that's... Her husband, he's one of them. They looked at opening up a hotel in Charlotte, North Carolina, and they got almost to the point where they was ready to close the deal. Somebody in Charlotte changed their mind. So they had been looking, and it was our understanding that, uh, they were ready to make contact and go through that hotel and buy it. And then Chris and I and the cops and everybody shut it up and shut it down. So allegedly, they were in a situation, yes.
Well, it could be over there.
Right. And, and, and so, uh, we, uh, we decided that, uh, so then they, they started getting involved. So we've had several people look at it, and our names is right. Don't misunderstand those drawings and everything. I'm not saying that they're not gonna do it. I'm just saying, I'm gonna be cautious as I have in the past. We, I know these people who deal with developers and people all the time. Our job is to be skeptical, and we are, and we look at the legal aspects of it. So if, if it turned out exactly the way it's proposed in those drawings, that hotel would be a destination of itself.
The size of it, where, or, or the, or the, or the boiler. Let me finish this. When I look at those drawings, I'm thinking, is this designed to be a destination for a hotel?
In fact, that whole area has been described less than it's supposed to have. They have represented us, and they can't do these, couching my words, because it may be true, it may not, I don't know. They have represented us, and they laugh in that, they include area, um, castle or the castle, even that would some might get like glass to generate electricity. How much they represent that it will be enough to basically, uh, like the hotel, it may be significantly less, it may be not at all, I don't know. That's what they're representing us, and that's what they use for this case, like. The other, um, turbine, which I would not cooperate with, is a turbine that has scale of height. There's a very, and then a great group of some other environmental issues along the road. So if, if like, if they've pulled it off, it will be like most big hotels, in all of the file, it's not a big asset.
This question, did we go through this case, this district? America wondering, you know, now there are health cases, they, they did a lead, a lead building grant. Environmental, right, without doing, without doing any first work.
Yeah. What I'm hearing is that they, they, they assess, they assess, fee house. And if by some chance the ownership of the hotel group isn't able to come up with the payment, that would be fine. Then when they're referring to that letter, is that the AFL-CIO? And I guess would be once you would fund the money, make that into those assessments. Is that, you know, like, they're saying about they got money, got money, gets it back. They have already, they just borrowed money from the payment.
I, I don't know what the AFL-CIO.
Well, that's why we're here.
I mean, they, 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 they have money. I does actually have, the AFL-CIO actually said that if there's a cost over on, or, I don't think, if I need to work, they're, they're coming, they're not gonna have to do about that much money. That's one, are they gonna read our numbers? I, I don't know. And then you have the other aspect, are we looking at something more, uh, uncertain? Like in terms of compensating, but there's, with the case, there's gonna be a lot of, yeah, a lot of actual reasons, and that has to be fair by ordinance. For, for, for by ordinance, you'll often try to set the type of assessment money we use. It's been very similar to the, to the project, same player, because it falls on all tenants.